Good evening, everyone. If everyone could please take a seat. And we're going to get started. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. If we could get started. My name is Jo Galván with the Las Cruces Public Schools. Before we start with our superintendent's presentation, I just want to let you know, if you're here in the audience, there is a microphone in the center aisle that you can come up during question and answer period, which is after his presentation, and you can ask your questions. We also have some questions that have come in earlier from emails and telephone calls, and we'll get to those before we leave at 6:00 today. If you're watching from home, don't wait until the end to email your questions in, so that we have time to be able to get to as many as we can. So thanks again for coming, and at this time, I'd like to introduce our superintendent of Las Cruces Public Schools, Stan Rounds.
And good evening. This evening, for the next hour or so, we want to spend some time walking through the rudiments of the budget for next year. Then we'd like to have maybe 15 or 20 minutes at the end that'll give you an opportunity to ask questions, or those that are looking in from home can also email those in to us. This budget is one that has a lot of challenge to it. This Board of Education that we have here, and I see Ms. Barbara Hall at the back, I believe is the only board member I see in the audience at this point. Barbara, thank you for being here, and I wouldn't be surprised to see other board members. We've spent a fair amount of time with them on big bites, if I will, the large policy questions that we want to be sure to answer in this budget. To lay the threshold, since the 2008-2009 budget year in New Mexico, there was a huge revenue downturn. You may remember that there was AARA money, A-A-R-A money, that came from the federal government to help state governments make budgets work. The state of New Mexico, like most states in the Union, have had trouble transitioning back over to self-sustaining budgets. We had hoped, rolling into this year, that we would see an increase in oil and gas at valorum taxes, because that's a major contributor to the state's general fund. It's also one of the most volatile pieces of the general fund. As we began to prepare the budget for the year we're currently in, we assumed that oil and gas would go up. At the time, this time last year we were doing budget, oil was at about $78 a barrel. It was projected to go over $100 a barrel, which it did, but then in November began to cool off, and by January, and in fact, today's spot price is about $47 a barrel. Now, the reason that's important is for every dollar rise or fall in oil, the impact on the state's general fund is about $7 million. And so, we're working with about a half a billion dollars less than we thought we might be working with in the current year. Now, this legislature is fairly generous in trying to provide some equity in funding, but unfortunately, we see very little new dollars, and we'll show you that. Let's look at this year's budget. This is the budget we're in in the current year. I want to talk about the big parts of the budget, and we're going to go down to the general fund part, and even more particularly, to what's called the operational fund. And that's the fund that the state equalization guarantee, or the state dollars primarily funds. It's also the funds that we use to do most of our business, and that is educating children, and it's primarily people. And so, we're going to talk a lot about people tonight. Now, if you look at this, you see the general fund was about $194.7 million for the current year, and that's the large part of the chart that you see there. We had capital outlay of about $58.6 million, and that's that larger, next larger square that's there. And these are mostly dollars we're spending either out of mill levies, or out of bond issues for our buildings and improvements. Our debt service is at about 9% of the total, or about $28.7 million, and that's how we pay off the bonds that we have in place. You then have federal grant, federal and grant funds. You hear terms like Title I, Title II, IDEA B. Those are the funds that are swept into that category, and while they do have people attached to them in most cases, it won't be the focus of our discussion tonight. Those funds are relatively stable. They're not growing. There's something called the ESEA reauthorization going on in Washington. We're not quite sure where that's going. We're in a continuing resolution at this point today, and those funds are flat. So let's look at the position compared in the current year budget and the budget we're proposing for next year. In the current year budget, you'll see that our beginning cash balance was about $8.2 million. And I'm going to talk a lot about cash in just a minute, because that's one of the larger stories in the budget considerations we're taking today. We also have the state equalization guarantee. In the current year, about $177 million. Other revenue, about $2.85 million, and those are revenues generated locally, mostly from our local property taxation that is able to be operationalized under state code. In the current year, we had about $188 million, with about $184.9 million that we expect to expend in the current year. So what you're going to see is that the cash balance that began at $8.2 million will land at the end of the year at under $3.3 million, is our projection. So what that means is that we're starting next year with about $5 million less dollars from cash to use in our budget, because you see, every penny we have in the district, be it carryover money or new money, it is all budgeted. Sometimes folks think we have a big box on the bottom of my drawer that has a pile of cash in it. The fact is, that's not true under public school budgeting process. We budget every dollar we have, both cash and new money. Or we call it recurring, which is something you get every year, or non-recurring, which is money you have in a savings account. So as you look at this, our state equalization guarantee this year is up by $2.8 million. That's really good news. Now, the reason that's there is three reasons. One, the legislature increased funding just slightly, which increased our unit value just slightly, by $20 a unit on $4,200 worth of per-unit value. So it's a very small number, about a half of 1%. Our other revenue is down, our cash is down, so when you look at the total resources available for budget for this next year, it actually is $2.7 million less than it was for the year that we're currently in. And that's part of the planning dilemma we've been working with as we've looked at the budget. So I want to spend a minute on cash balance. So when you look at the operational side of the world, the operational resources, about $177 million in the 2014-15 year is from that recurring source at about 94% of the total. What's important is that you see that little triangle that's taken out? That's the cash balance issue. For the current year, remember that $8.2 million I talked about? That was about 4% of all the money we would be able to spend was from cash. As we move into the new year, 2015-16, you see the percentage going up in what's coming from recurring resources at $179.8 million. But if you look at that little triangle that's up there, we're down to about $3.2 million cash, or just about 2% of our available resource coming out of cash. Let's look a little more closely at cash. So I'm going to talk about cash balance, and I'm going to use the term savings account. If this were your home, if this was your home checking account, you might have two parts to it. You might have the part that you write checks on, that you plan to do your bills against, and everything else, and then you might have a part called your savings account. In public schools, the savings account is your cash balance. Why is it a savings account? It's because the money can only be spent one time. It's not going to be replaced. It's not going to be replaced. So in public school funding terms, we call that a non-recurring resource. You can spend it once, but once you've spent it, it's gone until you replenish that. So in your own personal checking account, you usually try to reduce your expenditures and increase your savings after you've spent some of that or replaced that money. That's exactly what we're beginning to look at. I call that leveling it out, and then starting to retrench, or to regain the altitude of cash balance in the district. You see, it's not dissimilar with how we do our own personal business. Now, what we've plotted for you here is our two lines. The blue line is the cash since the 2003-2004 school year. Now, I got here right there, the 2000, what's called fiscal year 2007. Now, do you notice something about the slope of that expenditure of cash? Do you see how it was dropping? And then after I got here, we began to work on getting in between these two boundaries. That red line is what we'll call case critical. That red line is 3% of the total operating budget, 3%. The state of New Mexico recommends that you hold 5% in cash as a standard practice in public schools. And what you're going to see is you watch this line, oh, the upper line is 6%. So if you were to look at the state's recommended level at 5% and go down just 1%, which is about there on the azimuth, and go across, that's where that 5% line is. Now, why is the 6% line there? Because as we look at a district of this size with the amount of variability happening, it's my opinion that 6% is a better number for long-term planning than 5%. And so, we use that as our extremes. The top line is our desired line, the bottom line is our danger line. Now, let's look at what cash has done over the years. You see that it fell down, and then we began to work a strategy to bring this back up to that green line. And in fiscal year 10, which is the '09-10 school year, we got very close to hitting that line exactly. And that was a good year. And we had ourselves in the right place. Then, because of the bottoming out of AAR, we had to dip into our savings account and dip into it some more, and then we regained and went well above the line right here. The reason we did that was because we actually moved a very important payment from one year to another year, and that's our insurance payment. You see, on July the 1st, this district writes a check for about $5 million to the New Mexico Public School Insurance Authority. And in the past practice, before that happened right there, we made that payment on June the 30th. We cleared it off of the current fiscal year, so we'd help bolster our savings account going forward. Or you've heard paying it forward? By just a day. But that allowed us to have a little different leverage in our cash balance. Well, now, we are in the current fiscal year, and so we don't have that leverage any longer. And that's what's created this first drop, part of this first drop. That's what that leverage is right there. Then you'll see that as we move through time, we opened Centennial High School right here in the FY '13 year. When we opened Centennial High School, we added, we moved some staff from our high schools over to Centennial High School, but we didn't move them in the quantities with the kids that moved. You see, we moved between 300 and 350 students from every one of the other high schools to Centennial, which if you transferred all of those staff along, would have substantially shrunken the staffing at each of our comprehensive high schools. This year, as we're moving into budget, one of the things that we are doing is resizing or right-sizing those high school staffing models around how we did it in 1112, the year before Centennial High School opened. Now, what you also see now is the cash has fallen. Do you see that it's at a lower level than when I got here? That's $3.2 million. That's a scary issue. Look where the red line is. So clearly, we have to correct our cash balance position. The budget we're predicting, or we're presenting to you today, will bring this line here next year to just about the red line. So we're still a case critical. We're not at the desired point, but we have a plan. So let me do a little reconciliation of the budget. How far off are we from having a balanced budget? So if we take this year's budget and make adjustments for the new year, here are the We spent $5 million in decreased cash balance that we can't spend again. It's not in the savings account. We don't want to spend our savings account to zero. So we had to make that up just to stay even. We have an increase in medical costs of 4%, which is about $550,000. And that's our portion we pay on behalf of our employees. That doesn't include the portion that'll be the increase in employee cost in their medical insurance. We also have an increase in risk insurance of over $800,000. This is our liability insurance, and that's a substantial increase. But we have to pay that bill, and that'll come due on July the 1st, in an increase of $809,000. Increase in utilities will be $680,000. One of the major increases is in electricity. Electricity is rising, we know that. So's our water costs. And so, those are two utility increases we've been notified of, and just like at home, when the bill comes, you've got to pay it. And then finally, our transportation cost is upside down for next year by $600,000. Now, we have been upside down as badly as $950,000, and had it not been for an adjustment in funding in the current year, we'd be finishing the year at $800,000 upside down. In other words, not enough revenue for transportation for the cost of transporting kids. And so, we have a $900,000 issue to deal with in the new budget cycle. When you total that up, that is a budget adjustment requirement of $7.6 million. And so, the budget we build has to make that balance zero. So $7.6 million we need to work on. So we began working on this, and I want to thank the Board of Education. I see President Flores is here this evening. I saw Mr. Frank come in just a minute. There you are. Had Mr. Frank come in also, and then, as I said, Ms. Hall is here also from the board. And we sat down with the board in a work session to try to figure out, how could we reconcile the budget? We've asked the board for their assistance in working through what the issues might be. And here's what we did. In this side, this side is what we gave them as opportunities to shrink back to $7.6 million. In fact, we gave the board about $11.8 million worth of options and asked them to help us go through, and we put them in buckets. So you see that terminology? Here are the buckets you might want to contemplate from a policy level to give us direction about where we should put efforts in reducing the budget. And we had each board member, in fact, select their own buckets. And then we tallied those bucket decisions, and we came within, we were just a little over a million dollars out of balance, if I remember Terry coming out of that work session. In other words, we were still upside down. But the board worked very diligently. We want to thank them for that. So in this first list, the first thing that was looked at is the right sizing question in the budget, and that's $2.4 million. And I'm going to look at a cheat sheet just for a minute. That's 55.24 positions in the district, in teaching staff, a reduction of 55.24 positions. And so, that's what we're looking at as we move downrange out of that first bucket choice that the board helped us deliberate on. We also recommended we could go down, we thought, an additional teacher at each elementary school, and that would crank another $1.2 million. Quite candidly, the board said, we really don't want to go there. Our younger students are very important to us, and as we look at our equities, let's try not to go to that extreme. And so, that, we did not do, and that's why there's a zero right there. We then looked at furloughs. Our calculation was that if we furloughed three days, it's about $700,000 per day, we could regain about $2.1 million. Now, let me talk about teachers for a minute. Teachers right now, today, in this district are on a 183-day contract. Students come to school, 177. The difference of six days, we use for professional development. So in this scenario, our idea is to reduce professional development by three days, not change the student contact days at all, and teachers would still have three days to prepare for classes. And we know that preparation for class is very, very important to them, and so what we're recommending here is that none of these three would be PD days. These would be days to prepare either at the beginning of the year, or at the middle of the year for the students coming back, because we know preparation by teachers is terribly important. And that nets $2.1 million. Central office staff cuts, and we'll talk a little more about that. We are making another half a million dollar cut in central office. In central office, this is only in the operational side. This is not the federal program side, which is seeing an equivalent reduction also as we're working on that budget, just so folks know. Now, one of the things I fear is that central office work is misunderstood. Central office folks are there to support our mission of dealing with students, and then dealing with supportive teachers, and then also dealing with all of the things that come with the regulatory side of the world. Oh, there's also the little thing called payroll, finance, paying the bills, dealing with long-term suspensions, dealing with student discipline issues, dealing with evaluations. There's a whole list of things that happen out of central office. So one of the statements I will make is, on this budget, we will be able to do less because we have fewer, and we'll have to be retooling how central office supports our mission in the district. High school, we were, if you look at the total high school staffing, to get to the level we were in 2011-12, the metric there that we used, as an example at high school, it was 19.1 students per certified instructor in 2011-2012. To return to that matrix, or to that model, we could in fact reduce by 10 more teachers than are being proposed in this budget. And so, you see, that option was not chosen, but that could have saved another $600,000. Then transportation, remember I told you we're $600,000 upside down? One of the immediate things that we want to do is reduce transportation by $300,000. And so, I do know there are a lot of questions about, what does that mean? It doesn't mean we won't transport students. There are lots of ways to reduce transportation budgets. As an example, you put more distance between bus stops and some things like that. You run a little bit less equipment, and you're able to recoup these kinds of costs. We're working on that right now. We have to negotiate this with our contractor, by the way. Now, we also then realized that assistant principals, we had built out a process to have one assistant principal in every elementary school. And that's a good practice, especially with New Mexico Teach in play now, and the amount of times that we must do teacher evaluations, the disciplinary part of what goes on in our world and things like that. But we returned to an earlier model that in fact would have reduced six assistant principal positions, and that will now be five positions that we'll be reducing. And let me talk about that in a minute. One of the options we gave was that we would combine our assistant principals and our IS positions at the elementary schools and make them one person. In other words, the assistant principal would also be the instructional specialist, because that's a balancing question about how do you support instruction in buildings? And that was one that we deferred after talking with the board in regard to that. We also looked at the Albuquerque Public School staffing model for assistant principals. And if we were to take that model and put it in place in this district today, we would actually lose $1.3 million worth of assistant principals across all levels. To give you an example, the budget that we're proposing has a cut point for an assistant principal in elementary at 550 students. The Albuquerque model makes the cut point 800 students. And so, if you're in the Albuquerque Public Schools today for next year, their budget is based on 800 students per principal position, or per assistant principal position. And so, we're 250 better in the model we're proposing to you tonight than the Albuquerque Public Schools will be building their budget on as we speak. So we decided to reduce that by five rather than six. We had one school that the board felt was needing an assistant, an additional assistant principal enough to leave that in place, and I won't disclose that this evening, but I want you to know the board did exercise the will, and so reducing five for a $335,000 savings. Now, let's go to the high schools and to the middle schools. And here's what we decided to do, and again, this isn't the Albuquerque model. The Albuquerque model, in fact, would take, as an example, in the assistant principals' high school line, we decided the cut point would be 1,600 is the model for whether or not you would sustain this additional principal. We are reducing two high school assistant principals on, I'm sorry, let me look, on Yate High School and Mayfield High School are the two high schools that will lose an assistant principal under this budget. Now, Yate's already fixed itself, if you want to use that term, because I appointed Jim Sheppacom after he went through interviews as the incoming principal, and he's currently an assistant principal. So for that school, we simply would not replace Jim, and we're done. So that team stays together. The Mayfield question is yet to be determined, and we will continue to share that with you as we go through time. The middle schools, we decided that a school under 750 would lose one assistant principal each, and those two schools are Vista and Mesa Middle. Okay, Vista and Mesa. I've met with those principals. We're in the process of that planning, and that has another $200,000 savings. So in total, that's another $400,000 in reducing our field administration, if you will. And then we went down and looked at the educational assistance, and we looked at, what if you could reduce one EA, one educational assistant per building? Sound like a great idea? Sound like it'd be of parity, it's only one out of each building? When we went back and ran the numbers, we couldn't do that. And so, the savings the board assumed when they left, we couldn't do. We could in fact only be able to net out 10 out of the 40, because we have 40 buildings. Well, that has a savings of $350,000, and so that's in place. We also looked at, what if we were to go and reduce one custodian for every two buildings? Just one for every two buildings? That would have had a savings of a half a million dollars, but as we looked at our work models and some things like that, we didn't feel like that was a prudent move. The board didn't have, did not have an interest in that, and so that was also removed from consideration. But we were still out of balance, especially since we couldn't reduce the EA population by 40, only by 10. And so, we went back and brought some other items to the table. We met with the board in their work session last week, and between board input and other work we've done, we have a budget that will work. Let me talk a little bit about that. I'm a little long? Okay, so one of the things we could do is we could round down by seven more teacher positions. At elementary school, if we had a staff need that like a .28, we gave a whole nother teacher. So if you went down instead of up in our rounding, we could have saved seven more positions, but that was deferred. The board did not have an interest in reducing teaching positions. Fleet replacement fund, this is a fund we use to help build the fleet out so that the cars that people drive to meetings and whatnot can be rebought. We simply set that aside, push that out an additional year, and we save $141,000. At the dais, the president of the board and the board indicated to us in our work session that we were to terminate the LEAP program in the district. And to do that, that will save, that will close the program at Mesia Valley Alternative Middle School, saving the district $350,000 in personnel costs. We looked at our lunch monitors, and we have a scheme, a process for lunch monitors that we believe will be able to reduce the cost by about we believe will be able to reduce the cost by about one-half to $250,000. And that's both in adjustment of hours and adjustment of a few of those positions. So, we think we can net about $250,000 from that. School resource officers, we looked at what would happen if we did not have them at the middle schools. We have them at all middles and all high schools, and these are our LCPD or Mesia Marshall officers who reside in our buildings as our school resource officers. In talking with the board, we decided that was not an option because we were concerned about safety, and so we did not take anything out of that. We have returned to work. Now, we have 77 employees who retired and came back to work. Under New Mexico law, they can do that and draw a full compensation, but not contribute into the retirement, they can pull the retirement and a salary. Now, the reason we've used this is we've been able to get a lot of very high achieving, capable leadership teachers who are willing to come back and do additional work as long as they don't have the penalties that are involved with us. We've been paying both their part and our part. And at the direction of the board, Madam President, they suggested return to work should be slashed out completely. We put that in as a way of increasing our training and experience index, which contributed this year about 1.2 million new dollars to the district. So, we're afraid to chill that too much, so we're trying to reach a compromise point where we would make a one-half reduction in that support from the district this year at $200,000, and then over a three-year period, phase that out to allow people we made the deal with to stay reasonably close to where that was and perhaps not chill that. We want to study that this year. The operational ISs, we have two instructional specialists at the PDC being paid from operational dollars. We're going to take that to zero on the operational side, but instead fund them on the federal side. So, we're not cutting positions, we're cost shifting that cost over to federal. And finally, in transportation, you saw the $300,000 savings here. We now have come up with a method to recapture another $200,000 in transportation costs. So, that $600,000 problem is now a $100,000 problem. Do you see what's happening? And we've reduced it. So, we now have in fact come within $1,900 to the black of having this budget balanced and meeting the costs. Let's look at a few reductions. The biggest question that always comes to me is what are you doing at central office? Well, here's what we're doing at central office. You can see in the current year, all of these positions to there are positions that this year I did not fill even though they were authorized for us to do. Now, in this new budget, we're turning that off completely, and we're getting another $412,000 worth of reductions at central office and operational personnel. And that will net 1.190 million dollars from central office. So, we are making significant cuts here. We will be making another roughly half million dollar reduction on the federal employee side at central offices. As I said earlier, we will be able to do less than we're doing now as we operate at central office. Let's look at the budget comparison just for a minute. So, this chart here is what the operational budget looks like, and these are in dollars. And so, you see the largest part of the dollars are in instruction at 63%. Please note with me that the administrative superintendent is less than 1%, is .91%. And you can see the rest of the categories here, student support at 13%, a school administration at 7%, that's after the cuts of the APs we talked about, and on and on. Maintenance personnel, 13%. And so, what you'll see here is the administrative superintendent cut is a 21.2% cut. In instruction, teachers, EAs, we're making a 1.2% reduction of cost. So, let me put this in perspective. If the cost being done at administrative superintendent, that and central services were put together, and we translated that to instruction, I would have had to cut 350 teachers to equal the cut we're making at central office. Now, we're not doing that. We're cutting 55 positions, not 350. You can see the others rolling out, school administration, there's your APs, eight and a half percent down. So, we are taking our cost from this year budget at $188 million down to 185.5. Now, the operational budget comparison, this is by employees, because that's the money. Now, let's talk about the actual bodies of the employees. Please note again, administrative superintendent, we're cutting an additional 4.25 positions. Central, we're cutting another three, that's 7.25 positions, or a reduction of 38% of our staff at central office. And you'll see again in instruction, actually a 2.9%. There's that 55.24 positions in instruction that are being proposed as a cut in this budget. So, finally, when you get to the bottom line, we have 2,856.49 people being reduced to 2,780, or a reduction of a little over 76 persons. Here's the good news. We've spent all week, last week and this week, looking at how we can manage this. And today, I'm convinced that not one person will be laid off. That's good news. So, we'll be doing it through attrition. Now, some people may have to move from one job to another, but they all will still have jobs. I think that's really good news. This has been a real concern of mine in this budget cycle. So, let's take a last look, a final look at the operational budget. So, 87% of this operational budget will be spent on salaries and benefits. And I want to look at this chart right here for a minute. In the current year, this number is equivalent to that number. The 87% is actually that rounded up. So, we're going to spend 86.6% against 87.7%, a reduction of 1.1% for salaries and benefits. Here's what I want you to know. You see that number right there? The 86.6%? To have the budget in the right spot, to be right-sized, that number needs to be no greater than 85% and needs to get closer to 84.5%. That's the number we all need to strive for as we move through time. So, as we go into future budget years, I think we might have some work to do. That number at 89.3%, which is the percent of state equalization guarantee, that's just the revenue from the state that keeps coming in. That number's at 89.3%, that needs to be about 87% to be in the right spot. So, either metric you want to use, and sometimes those are confused, those are the target numbers we really need to work toward. So, what are the next steps? The school board will take action on the budget on May the 26th. We have to submit the budget to the public education department on the 29th of May, and the budget will take effect on July 1st, 2015. So, this evening was an opportunity for you to see and now ask questions about this budget. I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rounds. We have several that came in on the email, so I'm going to start with those as if anyone wants to have a question in the audience, they can come forward. The first question is about testing. It says, "My suggestion is to cut the amount of testing that goes on. I assume there is a lot of expense in giving thousands of students too many tests. How much is spent on testing? I think the school board should start there."
Let me try to give you a good number. I believe that, and I looked this up, this year, we're spending right at $800,000 for testing. We have a lot of testing in place, and we're trying very hard to call out the testing that isn't required by the state. In the budget assumptions before I brought you this this evening, we have trimmed all of the testing that is non-required out of our budget. And it actually factored into $120,000 that was already, we've already taken credit for in our budget build before I presented these numbers to you today. Tim Hand and his group had already moved out on that. So, next year's testing will only be those required by the state or by the federal government, and that'll be paid for by the district.
Thank you. The next question says, "Just wondering if those who already received notices of reemployment for next year are safe?"
Yes. If I've given notice of reemployment, which we have for most categories, not all, but most categories, that's our contract with you that you have a job next year. Now, it doesn't tell you where you're going to be or exactly what you're going to do. If you're a teacher, it'll say, "Is this a certified instructor?", but it won't say where, because that's yet to be delineated. We're working very hard. I wanted to look at Dr. Liz Marufo, very hard Liz, and her staff, Tracy O'Hara and others, have been working with me and with Mr. Dean for the last four weeks to really dial in to make sure that people feel seamless as we get to the end of the year. We want folks to know where they're going to be. And my pledge to you is do everything we can to answer that question. There are a few places that we're having to be relatively constructive with, and we will get that done for people. And Liz, thank you. We are attempting to contact everyone. Those promissories we made, that notice of reemployment, that's done. So, no, you don't have to worry about your job.
We have a couple of different people asking about furloughs, so I'll try to put those together. How is making staff take a three-day unpaid furlough cost savings? You will need to hire and pay substitute teachers to fill in when the LCPS teachers take their furlough, correct? Will you also reduce staff at central and satellite offices?
So, let me go there. So, the furlough is for every employee except food services. And the reason for that is food services already is on a shortened year, because they only come when kids eat plus one day. And so, next year, they'll only come when kids eat plus one day. We're not shortening the student attendance days. They're staying the same at 177. The difference is, as I explained earlier, all of us are going to work three less days and not be paid for them, myself included on paper, however I work mostly every day anyway, but that will be true for everyone. And so, we believe that that was fair, that was equitable as a way of getting through. The board endorsed that, we thought that was a good idea. And so, we won't be hiring subs because we're not interrupting instruction. It'll be on days that would be training, and we're not going to be training anymore. Okay? And so, that's the difference. Now, does it mean we'll have no professional development? No. Our summer institutes will still be there, and that runs on its own. Most of that's federal money we use, Title II that we use to do that with. That'll still happen. It's that beginning-of-the-year work we did where we had mandatory professional development, that's simply, we had two days early and one day mid-year, those simply go away, is our plan. And so, there's no need for subs, there's no more cost, and yes, it'll affect everybody except student nutrition service employees.
Also regarding furloughs, which paycheck will it affect? Will we have to be furloughed the following year too?
So, here's the good news, or bad news, I think it's good news. So, our plan, because we know the furlough going on the front end, rather than choose a pay period, it'll be normalized across the entire pay spectrum. So, when you get paid in your 24 installments, it'll be divided throughout equally all 24 installments. So, it has less effect than choosing your last pay period when you'll take three days less pay. Okay? So, it'll be just normalized for everybody. All right?
And the furlough for the following year?
Oh, the furlough is unknown. Here's my hope. I pray fervently that oil and gas goes up, not because I want to pay more at the pump, but because of the state treasury can have, let's suppose that oil and gas just gets to $70. That's $30 more, $25 more than it is today, which at $7 million per one is about $190 million more dollars. That's good, that we would get half of that in the public schools roughly. So, let's say 85 million, just for round numbers, $85 million into state equalization guarantee might, as long as the legislature doesn't tell us to do what they want with it and allow us to make the decisions, could easily remove the furlough issue on our behalf in the following year. That would be my hope, but I cannot give you and will not give you a guarantee. We're working a year at a time.
This email's from a parent. He or she says, "I understand the budget crisis. What about the numerous AES teachers?", which is Advanced Educational Services. "What about the numerous AES teachers who only teach half a day? Surely, they can teach an entire day like the rest of the staff, such as special ed teachers. What about saving money in that capacity? Thank you."
So, two things with that. The AES model is one that we will be reviewing to look at in each building probably as we look at right staffing. We've asked our principals to do the work in that regard, and we're going to be talking with them and with our friends in our union about how we might balance some instructional issues that are there. I don't want to misunderstand. AES facilitators do more than just teach. So, when they teach a half a day, they also take care of student needs, records, and articulation with other teachers during that other half a day of service. They serve all day. And so, the question is how do we balance the workload so that we can most appropriately do the teaching we need to do and the support we need to do?
A question from here in the audience regarding assistant principals. What will happen to them if they are reabsorbed into other positions? Are their salaries being reduced or remaining the same?
So, assistant principals who move out of the AP slot will be paid their salary commensurate with the position they fill. So, to put that in English, that means that if they leave an assistant principalship, and let's suppose they go to an instructional specialist position, which many of them in elementary came from, their pay slightly reduces. It's not tremendous, it's about a $2,000 difference if I remember properly for most of those, but it will be in fact reduced to that number. If they go back to the classroom, it would be at the appropriate classroom contract rate that they would receive there. And I'll tell you, I have one AP that we talked to today in fact, that said, "I want to go back to the classroom." And they understand the salary difference that that will create. They also understand the workload changes that that creates and everything that goes with that. You see, we have a wonderful bunch of professionals in this district in all categories, and we all understand what this is about. Here's the rest of the good news. We have some retirements in the administrative ranks that some of these APs will probably be filling. In fact, I know for a fact, because we spent this afternoon looking at that model and what we think we know about what's occurring there. And in many of those cases, we're going to be using some interview techniques and some matching techniques to be sure that what they bring to the table is what's needed in the building, and we form the right relationship teams administratively in each building. And this is hard work, and we understand that it impacts people's pocketbooks, and we understand that it has tremendous effect on their lives. And we don't take any of that lightly, but neither do they. And the wonderful thing is I've had so many come to me and say, "If you need me to do something else, boss, I'll do it." Isn't that marvelous? I see that with our ISs and others too. And so, we're going to work through this. We're very close to solution, I believe, in the model we looked at today. I think we're very close to having all of the displacements realized into new assignments. And I feel very, very good about that this early on.
We have 10 minutes left, so I'm going to ask that you be succinct, not that you haven't been, but just to make sure you know.
Keep it short, stupid.
Okay. This one is, says, "Mr. Rounds, if the district is under budget cuts, why are teachers being cut and then having their positions filled by other teachers? I am one of those teachers who got cut, but my position is open to be filled. The district spends a large amount in new teachers, and they are getting cut just to have their position filled by potential new hires. Where is the sense in that? I know the reason I was cut was a personal grudge issue with the administration. The first week of school, I went to them asking for a transfer due to a position they put me in, and that made me uncomfortable."
So, what I'm going to ask, because I don't believe that's a fact. There may be more to this story in this particular instance than is iterated in that, because we're not going through replacing senior teachers with junior teachers. That's not happening. And everything I've looked at, I don't see And everything I've looked at, I don't see one instance, not one, that that's the case. So I'm going to ask this individual to contact either Ms. Galvane or Dr. Marufo, and we'll be happy to dig into this specific instance, because that's a surprise to me. That doesn't sound like anything I know at this point.
This next email's from a teacher. You may have already answered a little bit of it, but let me read it. "I would like to know how many central office administrators you are cutting, not the ones that were not filled this year. How many are you cutting for next year? If you're taking away the very much-needed assistant principals from the school, what are you doing at central office with all the principals on special assignments and other administrators? I'm very concerned, because the school my son is at will be losing an assistant principal, and the administrative team will not have an instructional specialist. How are the remaining two going to handle professional development, discipline, and evaluation of teachers? Are you prepared for the lawsuits when our students are harmed because there are not enough administrators? Stand firm."
Thank you for that. And here's what I'll say. Those positions right there are the positions I didn't fill this year to that point right there. Okay? And they're going away completely out of our, out of our view. And then if you look at this slide, you'll see that there are 4.25 and 3. That's 7.25 positions additionally that are being reduced at central office out of the operational revenue. So I believe that's the answer to that question.
There's a couple from, that also are regarding transportation, so I'll just put them together. "Do the proposed cuts to transportation services include a possible discontinuation of magnet school busing? And how are you going to cut transportation? Isn't the district legally required to give kids a bus ride to school?"
Hmm, okay, that's a lot of questions. Let me try to get there. This district will be transporting students next year. We will be reducing our transportation costs by $500,000. I'm not sure about magnets yet. We're in the process of analyzing that and discussing it with our bus contractor, and we have to negotiate what the routes are going to look like. Here's what I suspect's going to happen. I suspect there'll be a few, a few fewer buses. Does that make sense? Couple of fewer buses. I believe that there will be longer times between bus stops, and I believe that will bring this budget likely into alignment. I'm not sure on whether or not we'll have to discontinue the bus service, though, for magnet schools. That has a cost of about $300,000 a year. And the up and down of that is, if parents are delivering their students mostly to magnets by car, that might be a reasonable cost change. I need to know the ridership, and I don't know that today. We do know that some parents are unable to transport their children to magnets, and we have always been very cautious to get into that, into that decision point. We'll be equally cautious, and today I don't know that answer. We will let everybody know, once we have an answer, we can share.
This one could be answered quickly, I think. "What kind of raise will the superintendent be getting?"
A one and a half percent reduction, like everybody else, because I'll be, I'll be having that three-day furlough issue occurring. So there'll be a reduction. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm also return to work. So I'll be losing half the leverage from the school district on that portion, too, which means my net reduction will be six and a half percent.
The next question, were you done?
Yes.
I'm sorry, okay. The next question, "Shouldn't the legislature allocate enough funds for a school district to remain solvent? Are there emergency funds that can be given to LCPS?"
So, yes, they should. They haven't always, and I'm not blaming our legislators. This is a very tough time. It has been a tough time for legislators. When I began superintending in 1983, the portion of the general fund pot that went to public schools was 53%. So 53 cents on every dollar in the general fund came to the public schools proper. That number is now 43%. So I support retrenching that back. The issue is that we began to pay for Medicaid as a state. So rather than take, rather than taking out of the whole general fund, they took it from public schools and, in large part, not completely, but in large part, put it into Medicaid, which we all have to make our own decisions about, was that a good move or not? As a school person, I didn't like it as much as other options they might have done. We need to really revisit that. If we were to return to what I started as a superintendent in 1983 in, it would cost three-quarters of a billion more dollars into public schools today, on today's metrics. And we wouldn't be having this discussion at all. What was the second part of that? I guess that was it.
Emergency funding.
Oh, emergency funding. So the legislature put out $2 million of emergency funding for the total of all 89 school districts in New Mexico. I think there is a very unlikely chance that we would see any of it, because we, believe it or not, are better off, better off than most districts under, under 500 students. And that's where the emergency money has went. Last year, they spent almost $6 million on those, on those school districts without us at the trough. That has been reduced to $200,000. I worry for my colleagues in small districts in New Mexico, and I don't intend on asking to have any of their money.
Do you have enough time for a wrap-up, Mr. Rounds?
So let me say this. This is a tough budget year, but I think we have a budget, thanks to the Board of Education and the staff and others that have worked on this, that I think spreads out the impact across a number of areas. I think it produces a fair budget. I think we all share in that balancing act. And here's what I know certainly. As we go into business next year, we will take care of our kids. And every day, they'll still go to class and receive high-quality instruction, and we'll support all of that that goes on. Because Los Cruces Public Schools, among any district in New Mexico, has the mission of children-first really taken to heart. I'm proud of that. And I'm proud of the work each and every one of you in this room does, and everybody who works in our district. And we're going to be fine. We're going to get through this. I've seen a lot harder times. When I was superintendent in the Hobbs Municipal Schools, I had one year with 10,000 students and the next year with 8,500 students. Imagine if that was the gravity of the loss of revenue we would have to deal with. And we survived that. So I certainly know we can survive this. So I appreciate the board for their input, their work with us on this, and I appreciate all of you. If you have any further questions, please contact us on our website or contact Joe Galvane. We'll be happy to share any information with you that we can as we move toward adoption of this budget. Thank you.